All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order for Lake Mills City Council, February 15, 2022. Misty, can I have a roll call?
Ms. Kurler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quidnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand and join us for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Correction and our approval of City Council regular meeting minutes of February 1, 2022, and City Council work session minutes of February 3, 2022. I think we can take this as one whole. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the City Council regular meeting minutes from February 1 and the City Council work session minutes from February 3, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kurler, second by Mrs. Bishop. Discussion? All right. Trying to remember if I need to do a roll call. I guess when I do, I do need a roll call. Let's just, yeah, let's go ahead and do a roll call, Misty.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Correspondence from the community. Ms. Kurler, did you have any?
Thank you, yes, I did. I had a citizen contact regarding the wastewater treatment plant proposals. And I had correspondence from the Joint Rock Lake Committee on two related issues. On one is the beach monitoring protocol, which they've drafted for us, and also some correspondence on Sandy Beach West, which DNR is proposing to be listed as an impaired water for E. coli. So I forwarded that information to staff, and I imagine we'll be hearing more about the impaired waters issues from staff down the road.
All right, Mr. Fields?
I just received a couple of emails and one phone call thanking us for our decision on the boat lifts from the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. I had correspondence on Mill Pond, just wondering what the next steps are there, and a couple correspondence on the EMS issue. Ms. Quidnow?
I had similar correspondence with regard to the boat lifts, as well as some questions that I forwarded to staff to help me answer with regard to park lean costs and so forth.
Okay. Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, I had similar correspondence regarding supporting our decision not to remove the boat lifts. I had correspondence also asking about the Mill Pond Committee, and correspondence asking if there was going to be public input on the executive search and how that might happen.
All right, thank you. Moving on to questions and public comment. So tonight, no public hearing. "The public is encouraged to address the council this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda. If you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting, it's been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided." All right, so we are open for public comment. I think I just had one person register, so Tom, you're welcome to talk.
Hi, everybody. It's a privilege to be here tonight in front of you. My name's Thomas Beekel. I reside at North 6617 Short Hills Road, Township of Lake Mills, and am also the Town Lake Mills Chairperson. Tonight, and it's great to see you face-to-face finally, by the way, other than on Zoom or Teams or whatever, so many of them these days. I'd like to address three different concerns or issues. Number one being wastewater treatment option considerations. I'd just like to please ask that you give consideration to the current future economic environment that we're in. There's a lot of rising costs of other services. I'm sure what you've all seen, as I see. There's going to be more school district increases, and in the near future, potentially another school district referendum. That also is an increased cost to the whole community. And then, of course, there's the good old inflation that's around right now, and I'm sure that's going to be around for a while in the COVID environment that we're still in and post-COVID environment. And, of course, not every household is created equal. And I don't know too many lottery winners in the Township of Lake Mills and/or in the city. As far as the projects are concerned, large or small, I just like to say I've been on a lot of projects over the course of my career, and even grants and things like that, you know, they're DNR-related, and it just seems like there's always costs, right? And that there's future costs to whatever construction happens. There may be new EPA or DNR stipulations that come down the pipeline even after you get into something. There's typically technology improvements later on down the road that save costs, and, you know, typically some things in the environment, which is good, so that's to be considered. And, once again, there's always facility problems. And it seems like, you know, any companies, companies, they don't like to honor, you know, warranties, but they sure like change orders and selling their new features down the road. So please keep that into consideration. And that, I just ask that all options have been exhausted. I know this has been a lot of work for all of you, and it's not easy, especially when something like this comes down the pipeline. But having a phase-in is, I think, really critical, you know, in regards to all the other economic concerns that families are facing these days. So please take that into consideration in any other options that may be phased in, but that might be too late for that, and I understand that. Second order of business, the JRLC appointment. Me and Mr. Waters have talked about this a lot, and, of course, there's a strong focus on the overall health of the lake, environmental, educational, safety, and, you know, creating a fun atmosphere for all. We would like it to be inclusive and diverse, or a diverse committee that represents, you know, our community's interests. So it also makes for a healthy committee to get us all the information to make informed decisions, instead of being pigeonholed one side or the other, depending on, you know, what organization's involved. You know, and, of course, appointing qualified candidates. You know, appointing a selection area of need. Kathleen Coontz, you know, would fill a crucial area of need. Someone with planning and implementation experience, which that committee does need. Someone that is newer to the community, that gives a different perspective. Someone that does not live on the lake, which, you know, we're struggling with right now in the current committee. And desire to keep the lake atmospheres and watersheds healthy, which is really, really important. The last order of business is lake law enforcement, and it has to do with the previous discussion at your past meeting on the boat lifts. I'd just like, please be mindful of leaving lake law enforcement lifts in the area of heavily, heavy public use. It seems to be a great area down by Sandy Beach. And if the lifts, you know, are in place, you know, the chances of theft and other things going on with a law enforcement vehicle there are probably going to be less anyway. If something were changed in the planning phase to address the lift issue, it would be nice that the town gets notified so that law enforcement does not get displaced, because they're very, very critical on our lake to keeping it a safe and fun atmosphere for all. Thank you for your valuable time and efforts to keep the entirety of the community in mind when making your decision, especially in improving. Thank you all, have a great night.
Hey, hang on, Tom. Thank you for coming tonight. And we don't get a chance to talk to the town chair or town board that often, so I just wanted to give people a chance to see if there was any questions for you. Anyone have any questions for Tom? Yep.
I don't have a question, but just want to say thank you for, you know, the work that you do and the township does, and your residents, to try to collaborate with our community in the areas that we need to. So thank you for that.
And likewise, it's a team effort, for sure.
All right, awesome, thanks, Tom. All right. Online, I don't see anybody. Anyone else in here?
I didn't register, is that all right?
Go ahead and sign up, and we'll give you three minutes. How's that?
My name is Greg Polachek, and I'm on the Public Works Board. So thank you for hearing my comments tonight. I wanted to address wastewater treatment issue. I don't know that you've heard, I don't see any other members here from our group, but I wanted to explain my position on that issue. I believe that the new wastewater treatment plan, Option 3A, provides room to accommodate growth in a more suitable land use environment at this time while land is available. I think it provides the capacity to serve the north side of I-94, which the current system does not, at least from a capacity standpoint. It allows more flexibility to adapt for new unforeseen regulatory changes and updated technology. It provides for discharge into a larger waterway, as does Option 2 as well. But it does help to protect the integrity of Rock Creek, which we can anticipate that being upgraded from a water quality standpoint by the WDNR. The extra expenditure is less than the worst-case scenario that Strand has put together when they asked us to monetize some of the risk calculations. A new wastewater treatment plant is recommended by the city's comprehensive plan, February 2009, and also in 2001. So in the February Plan 2009, it said planned near-term upgrades will allow the existing plant to meet current needs and near-term demand without additional growth, which we have had. The existing plant will likely reach the end of its service life midway through the 20-year planning period. So that was 2009, and that was 13 years ago, which has just passed the midway of that planning period. And then the 2001 sanitary sewer study also addressed this issue, and I'll quote from that study. "If additional capacity is necessary, the city may need to explore acquiring additional adjacent property or look for a new site. This report recommends the latter." So from that, you know, this is our own, our own city. Planning documents have been recommending this, or at least anticipating this. And that's why we hire planners to work on comprehensive plans, which do have public input. So it's not easy to want to spend the money. Even Option 1 isn't good. No one wants to spend even Option 1. But I would equate this situation to having a family car that has 250,000 miles on it. And at some point, you've got to make a decision. Do I keep repairing this car? Now there's new technology involved. There's all kinds of cameras involved in new cars. The new car technology, electric, there's upgrades there. This is a situation where we've got a family car that is in need of either making a decision to repair it and upgrade it, or to, you know, make the difficult decision and purchase a new car. It's very, that's, I know it's simplistic to say that, but that's what the issue is similar to. So thank you for listening to me, and I would recommend voting for Option 3A. Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming tonight. Any questions for the board member? All right, thank you. All right, that closes our public comments section. Move to City Manager's Report.
There are several documents that have been provided to you, similar to historical financial documents that we regularly provide. So unless there are any questions, I don't have anything else.
Any questions for Mr. Wilkie? All right, seeing none, we'll move forward. Item made on the agenda is Councilmember Board Report and Acceptance of Minutes from Public Works Board of January 11, 2022. Any, any comment on those from Mr. Fields?
I guess the one thing to point out here is, you can see by the motions, the Public Works Board is somewhat divided between the option of the 2 or 3A. So that was kind of why we're here tonight, to make our decisions and to have the recommendations. So, and I thank Greg for coming down and sharing his views.
All right, any questions or comment? Seeing none, I'll accept those into our record. Thank you. Council Business. Item A is a discussion decision on confirmation of Council President's appointment of Kathleen Coontz to Joint Rock Lake Committee for the remaining term through April 30, 2023. If I could get a verbal motion to that effect, that would be great.
I'll make a motion to confirm the Council President's appointment of Kathleen Coontz to the Joint Rock Lake Committee for the remainder of the term ending April 30, 2023.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Kurler, second by Ms. Quidnow. All right, so my appointment, and I see Kathy is online with us today. She's pretty new to the community as far as buying property about three or four months ago. But actually, her family and her have been coming to this community for many, many years. They own property at the Woodland Beach Resort area. So she's very familiar with the community, wants to get involved as a new member to the community, and has very good business experience as outlined by Tom. So that's about all I have. Is there any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, can we have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, so congratulations, Kathy. And we'll get you all set up for the first meeting for the Joint Rock Lake Committee, which will be in the month of March, since they've already had their February meeting. So we'll get you all set up with that. And thank you for your, for volunteering to serve.
Thank you so much.
Great, thanks. Moving on to Item B. Discussion Decision on Confirmation of City Manager Appointment of Deputy Clerk Laura Weber. And we do have a motion, City Council Motion 22-2-2-1. Misty, can you read that?
City Council Motion 22-2-2-1, Confirmation of City Manager Appointment of Deputy Clerk.
Can we have a motion?
I move to approve Motion 22-2-2-1, confirming the City Manager's appointment of the deputy clerk.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. Is there any comment from, from staff, Misty or Mr. Wilkie?
City Clerk, City Attorney, and I interviewed several qualified candidates. Ms. Weber came to the top, and we offered it to her, and she's accepted, and she's ready to start. So we'd like to get her appointed. Do you have anything you want to add, Misty?
I agree with everything Steve just said. I'm excited for Lori to join our team tomorrow morning, so hopefully this goes through smoothly.
So there's like no pressure tonight, I guess?
No, no pressure.
All right.
She just told you to hurry up, basically.
Yes. Just got the paperwork already done, so.
Is there any other comment or questions? Seeing none, I guess we better hurry up and vote on this. Go ahead, Misty.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing you tomorrow, Lori.
Welcome to the team, Lori.
Welcome, Lori.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight, congratulations. All right. Exciting. Item C on the agenda is Resolution 22-7. Misty, can you read that?
City Council Resolution 22-7, Conditional Use Permit Declarations and Findings, David Grant, Grading and Excavation Within 300 Feet of the Ordinary High Watermark of Rock Lake, 513 West Lake Park Place, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, Parcel Identification Number 24607131441070.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Mr. President, in light of review of the materials and the recommendation from the Plan Commission, I would like to make a motion to deny this conditional use request.
Could I, could I make a statement?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, I know that that's the way you're going to want to go. But the way we always bring it forward is in a positive motion, so that yes is yes and no is no. So what I would recommend you do is make a motion to approve, and then all vote no, if that's the way you want to go. Because no is then denied. So it's consistent with the way we always done it, so people don't get confused about what yes and no means and what no means. If you want to deny it, it's a no.
Or you have the option of not bringing it forward at all.
Or not bringing it forward at all. I would prefer that you deny it by voting no on the prepared resolution.
I can, may I ask a clarification?
Do you want to rescind or?
Yeah, I mean, I can withdraw my motion based on that. But if we want to make any statements as far as the reason for the denial, how would we include those? Or would we have the ability to include them?
Once the resolution is brought forward, you can have all the conversation you want and make all the statements you want. And then, you know, you can say why you're going to vote no now, or why you're going to vote yes, so that it's clear. But at least that way, we have a, you know, we brought it forward as the proposal was, and to deny it is a no.
So is there a motion for Resolution 22-7?
I'll move to approve Resolution 22-7, the Conditional Use Permit Declaration.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Fields, second by Mrs. Bishop. All right, staff comment?
Brian, you want to go ahead and comment?
Yeah, hey, guys. So the memo provided does just give a sort of a background history of the work as city staff understands it. Real gist of the scenario is that permits have not been sought for work prior to the completion or the activity on sites, including the, you know, completely ignoring stop orders that have been posted to the site and sent to the site, violation letters, et cetera. My understanding is that work does continue as recently as last month. So as many council members can probably attest, the city does put an effort to work with property owners that have completed work without permit to try to bring them into compliance. In this case, property owner did not work in good faith or seemed to be looking in good faith to rectify the issues. So staff did recommend denial. And then you obviously do have a resolution in front of you regarding that.
Any questions for Brian?
Do we, do we know who the contractor was? When looking at all these pictures with the house jacked up and basement work, they definitely had contractors on site working on this. Contractors?
The basement work was done by Schweiger, and they did eventually come in and apply for a permit when pressured by the neighborhood service officer. They had originally expressed that the homeowner had told them they would get a permit, but he never did, so they eventually came in and applied for the permit.
So they did get some sort of a building permit, but the contractor had to do it?
Yes, for the foundation work. The grading and, you know, a lot of the other work that's been going on on site hasn't had any permits. Nor have they complied with, like, the erosion control or any of the other requirements that go on normally on a site, particularly in the lake overlay district, where when you're within 300 feet of the shoreline, you have to apply for a conditional use permit to do grading and that sort of stuff that wasn't done, so. The staff actually kind of, again, did the permit for them, but they haven't been complying with it at all. So it was, this is one where, normally when we get them and we bring them in, they make some level of effort to comply with the requirements of the code. In this case, they have not.
Yeah, because we went through this last year. There was a lot of, you know, drawings about how they had to go and put back vegetation and the soil erosion. And, I mean, in the past, a lot of people have worked with us on that when it was identified.
Yes.
I have a question. I'm just wondering, do we have more ability to work with somebody with a conditional use permit if we have certain conditions laid out than not to have a conditional use permit? Because I'm thinking, do we, do we add something to the effect of, like, Item 3, maybe, an existing site plan? Item 4, proposed site plan? Item 5, slope remediation plan? Item 6, a certain timeframe to get these activities done? Would we have more leverage with that in place than not to have it in place?
No, I don't think we have any more leverage.
Okay.
They know what they're required to do in either way, because they have the information that you have. Our anticipation is they have shown no intent to comply with the requirements one way or the other. So I don't, I guess I should be careful here. I don't know that it's going to be better one way or the other. Maybe for Dan it will be, because he'll probably be the one prosecuting it one way or the other. But from my standpoint, the work's done. We're going to have to go back and do something. Having issued them a permit, I don't know if it benefits us at all or not. It was more of a statement of, hey, you haven't cooperated, you haven't made any effort, and we're not doing, we're not giving you a conditional use permit until you show some level of intent to do it.
Steve, if I could add to that, we're not sure of the entire scope of what's been done either. And I think, you know, having a site plan at some point, you know, if we could try to get that, that may be beneficial. But I'm not confident that we would get there. And it may just provide an opportunity to sort of drag this out well beyond how far it is. And shoreline issues obviously are very sensitive due to the nature of the site.
Right, yep.
And then considering the location adjacent to city infrastructure, you know, structure with the cattle as well.
Do you have something, Mr. Fields?
You're saying there was still work going on as of last month. Is all that runoff been cleaned up, or does it still need to be?
The work on site was actually in a different area. The, the work along the, that was the original permit has not been cleaned up. They did put down sod, but they didn't clean it up or do any other effort to provide erosion control.
And the sod really should be viewed as sort of a Band-Aid. You know, sod does not necessarily provide the erosion control and preservation of that soil that we would like. It doesn't establish overnight, so, you know, it's a Band-Aid to prevent sort of the direct erosion, real erosion. you know, it's a Band-Aid to prevent sort of the direct erosion, real erosion that would occur from rainfall and such.
Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, the Plan Commission did consider this last month, and I don't see their recommendation here, so I don't want to speak for what that was because I don't have it verbatim, but to give an informal overview, the Plan Commission recommended denying this U.P. on a vote of five to zero. And the Plan Commission gave three reasons. Again, this is my informal restatement. But those reasons were for an incomplete application, for lack of good faith on the petitioner's part, and for repeated code violations. So I just want to bring that to this council's attention.
Thank you. Ms. Curler?
I just, I guess, had a question or questions about what level of contact the city staff have been able to have with the property owner. I understand there's an out-of-state address as well for him, and, you know, he may not live here year-round, so, you know, we saw several letters that went to his Lake Mills address. Do we know that he received them? Has there been contact, direct contact?
We sent letters to the Lake Mills address. We sent letters to the Vail address. There's some level of indication that they were received because I think they were sent registered. The, there has been contact made on site at least twice. Several times he's, we've noticed him there, and then he's avoided us. But there has been a certain amount of level of contact made or attempted to be made.
All right. Any further comment or questions? All right, seeing none. Can we move to a roll call vote, please? And just to
Reaffirm.
Just to reaffirm, a yea vote is to approve the conditional permit, and a no, nay vote is to deny the conditional report, conditional use permit.
Mr. Fields?
No.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Quidnow?
No.
Motion failed.
All right. Thank you. Item D on the agenda is a discussion decision on wastewater treatment plant facility. There is a City Council motion, 22-2-2-2. Misty, can you read that?
City Council motion, 22-2-2, direct city manager to proceed with option blank for wastewater treatment plant facility and design.
All right. Thank you. And the reason that's left blank is that there was not a recommendation coming from Public Works. So it was a split vote of three to three on option two and option three A. So before we let Travis talk here, can I have a motion?
I move to adopt motion 22-2-2-2, which is to direct the city manager to proceed with option blank for wastewater treatment plant facility and design.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Ms. Curler. I think we're opening the floor to Travis. Is that right?
We can, yes.
All right. Great. Fantastic.
All right. Good to see everyone again. So tonight, what I'll go through is an update on what has been presented previously to council. This information was also presented to Public Works Board last month, and then I have a few updates from that discussion based on some correspondence that the city staff and Strand have had with DNR. So just a brief review of the options that have been being discussed for the wastewater treatment plant discharge options. Option one is keeping the plant at the existing location and continuing to discharge to Rock Creek. Option two is keeping the plant at the existing location, but relocating the outfall to the Crawfish River, so there'd be a pump station constructed, and the effluent from the plant would be pumped to the Crawfish. The benefit being that that's a larger body of water. It has more assimilative capacity for receiving that effluent, which allows for less stringent limits. And option three is construction of a new treatment plant at a different location that would discharge to the Crawfish River, and we identified three technologies for that option. An oxidation ditch plant, which is the same type of plant that is in the current location, conventional activated sledge plant, and a new technology called aerobic granular sludge. This is a slide similar to what you have seen in previous presentations showing the overall preliminary rate impact from the different options. So the different bars, the first blue bar is the option one, staying at the existing location. Orange is option two. And then the next three bars are for option three, the new plant, and you can see that those are all basically identical in rate impact and cost for planning purposes. The black horizontal line that you see there is the current rates for the average rate payer, which is approximately $500 per year. And you can see that if the project is not phased, there's no phasing incorporated into this graphic, you can see the overall rate impact on a preliminary basis, not considering, you know, what would go into a detailed rate analysis such as debt retirement, potential grants, taking into account additional users. That would all need to be reviewed in detail in a formal rate study. And just pointing out, options one and two are the only options that can be phased. The, a portion of the upgrades that are needed right now at the treatment plant can be done now, and a portion can be done later in 10 years for options one and two. Option three is very difficult to phase because the facility would need to be constructed in its entirety. It would be difficult to perform partial treatment at the existing site and then finish treatment at the new site. For practical purposes, that would be, that would be difficult to achieve. So the overall difference between these options is about, from a rate standpoint, is about $300 per year comparing option one to option three, about $200 per year comparing option two to option three.
Travis?
Yes.
Can I ask a question before you move from this slide? I think I saw in the technical memo, and maybe you could just reinforce if this is correct. If the city were to phase the construction, choose one or two and do phasing, would that actually cost more than not phasing?
Yes, very likely. The total dollar amount would increase if the project is phased, and I will touch on that, but but just briefly, generally smaller projects cost more because, because there's economy of scale for constructing a larger project. So while you have a contractor on site, it's cheaper for them to be constructing other processes while they're on site. They've mobilized to the site already. They already have all of their equipment there, so it doesn't cost them as much to construct one project all at one time compared with constructing half of it at one time, having them leave the site, restore the site, and then having them come back several years later. They have to bring all their equipment back, tear up the whole site again, restore the whole site. So it, just in, at a high level, I would anticipate that splitting the project into phases might add on the order of 15% to the cost just to pay for those additional mobilization and demobilization activities.
Thank you.
We've been communicating with DNR throughout these evaluations. Strand and the city have had several meetings with DNR, presenting the same information to them, making sure that they're aware of the evaluations that are going on and getting their input. DNR does typically require to select the lowest cost option based on a 20-year total present worth. So they're not just looking at the initial capital cost. They want to know what the operating costs are over the course of 20 years, and then taking back that back to a value in today's dollars. So that's what we call a 20-year total present worth. But they do provide approval on a case-by-case basis for alternatives that may be higher than that lowest cost option, taking into account non-monetary factors, many of which we'll be discussing in a couple of slides here. So when we met with DNR and we pointed out that there is a difference in these costs, we discussed monetizing some of those factors that hadn't initially been assigned a dollar value in the initial evaluation. So we have performed that analysis. So to do that, we looked at assigning a monetary value to some of those risks and non-monetary factors that included the risk of getting more stringent limits on the Rock Creek in the future, especially if that stream gets reclassified by DNR. There's a risk of greater costs because the existing site is located on an old landfill. Cost of infrastructure in areas of development, so there may be advantages to having the wastewater treatment plant infrastructure located in the areas of future development, such as north of the interstate. Proximity to residences. At full buildout on the existing site, the treatment processes will be very close to the trailer park that's located adjacent to the plant. There will eventually be the oxidation ditch that would be constructed at full buildout would only be about 50 feet from some of the trailer homes, which is obviously very close. Those, you know, that equipment makes noise, there's lights, so that needs to be considered in this in this non-monetary evaluation. And then just the risk of sunk cost in the existing treatment plant and then having to construct a new treatment plant later. That's kind of the worst-case scenario from a financial standpoint would be to make a large investment in the existing plant now and then and then decide to build a new treatment plant later, because then you've basically invested in both properties. And all of this came about from the drawbacks and benefits that we had been discussing previously in the analysis, but we hadn't assigned a monetary value to. And the reason why that wasn't originally signed a monetary value was it's difficult to put cost to a lot of these items. For example, it's difficult to put a value on having an oxidation ditch 50 feet from someone's house. That's just a, you know, it's just hard to put an engineering value to something like that. So we wanted to list these and discuss how, how we came about including a monetary value for these, but also how there might be a potential for that monetary value to be lower and how it might be higher. And that's what this table is showing. So we'll just run through the, some of these risk factors. More stringent limits, so especially on Rock Creek, it's, of course, possible and probable that there's going to be stricter future limits. Like, for example, we know that total nitrogen limits are going to be happening within the 20-year planning period because DNR has told us that. We just don't know exactly what year. So, you know, that is going to be challenging from a footprint standpoint on the existing site. So we've included a potential cost for adding that, that total nitrogen treatment. Now, it's possible that new technologies might come about in the future that would lower those costs. It's, but it's also possible that there's something that's not even on our radar right now that may come about that would require more advanced treatment that would be difficult to implement on the existing site. For unsuitable soils, that would mainly stem from the landfill materials that landfill materials were encountered in the last major construction project in the early 1990s. In that project, it was possible, and it was approved by DNR, to keep those materials on site in a berm that may no longer be allowed, and what we've assumed for this project is that all the excavated material would need to be hauled to a landfill. Now, it's possible that maybe not all of the material would have to be hauled, and that could lower the cost. But we have not added costs for anything such as hazardous waste, which would require special treatment and would raise the costs beyond what we've assumed. Proximity to residences, we've included cost in this risk analysis for purchasing the nearby trailer park. And that may not be a requirement, but it is in NR 110 code, the code that applies to wastewater plants, that treatment plants should not be located within 500 feet of residences, and that is just not possible on this existing site. It may be possible to get a variance, but it also may be something that down the line the city wishes to pursue as far as purchasing that trailer park to either provide more of a buffer between the treatment processes and the public, or just to allow for future expansion. So we've included a cost for that. The cost could be reduced by purchasing just a portion of the trailer park, but we have not included legal and relocation costs in that evaluation, and those could be significant in this case. Remote bio solids management, it's probable that at some point down the line, the plant is going to run out of space for bio solid storage, and that bio solid storage would at least need to partially move off-site, and that would likely require additional staffing. So we've included an additional staff at the treatment plant to accommodate managing that bio solids program. Perhaps you could get by with a part-time staff to do that. That would lower the cost, but we've not included any additional equipment or trucking costs that may be required for that program. Repurposing the treatment plant land, in the original valuation, we didn't include any value for reusing the existing land that the existing treatment plant sits on for another purpose. If the plant were to move, most of that property could be used for another purpose by the city. So we've incorporated a value for that. We have not taken into account any additional revenue that may be gained from increasing the tax base. We've only included just a raw value for the land. And then, as I mentioned, kind of the worst-case scenario would be investing in the existing site and then moving the plant within the 20-year planning period. So that may be a possibility if there is, kind of the main drivers, there would be some unforeseen limit changes coming from DNR, if there was, you know, very strict limits that were put into place, something that's not on our radar right now, and the plant didn't have space to accommodate those new limits. The plant may need to move. Or if there's much higher growth than what the Department of Administration is projecting, that that could also cause the plant to run out of space. And then finally, just providing a buffer between the new treatment plant and surrounding properties. So to compare apples to apples, what we did there is we added costs for odor control at the existing site, just because obviously there, for a new site, there would not be any issues with local residents having concerns with odors. So that was, you know, how we, how we wanted to compare fairly the options between the existing site and the new treatment plant site. So I know that was a lot to go through, but this is kind of the end result of all of that analysis, and what we're showing here is And and what we're showing here is the first five bars on this bar graph are the total present worth for options 1, 2, and then 3A, 3B, 3C. So that's information that you've seen before as far as comparing the 20-year total present worth for these alternatives. What we've done in the final two bar graphs are, first, we've added what we're calling the baseline risks to option 1 and option 2, and that takes into account everything except the major expense of relocating the the treatment plant. So we've added up the the risks from from more stringent limits, the unsuitable soils, proximity to residences, the biosolids management, employee, the value of the land, and odor control. So that gets us to this first dashed dashed line, which we're calling the the baseline risk. And that brings options 1 and 2 to 90% of the cost of option 3 on a 20-year total present worth basis, so incorporating both capital and O and M costs. Then if we were to add in the the monetized risk of relocating the treatment plant in 20 years, obviously, that costs that cost becomes much higher. And we're we're bringing that future value of the money back from 20 years from now to present dollars. So that's why that's why it's this green bar here is much, much smaller than than the actual value if you were to construct it today. We're we're taking into account the time value of money. But even doing that, it's still by far the most costly option. So what this is really saying in a nutshell is the the worst financial decision is making a large investment in the existing site and then deciding to move the treatment plant within the 20-year planning period. That's that's one main takeaway from this. The other takeaway is that if you monetize all of the risk factors that we just went through, the costs of both option 1 and 2 are within 10% of option 3, the the new treatment plant option. So a lot of information there. We can we can stop and take questions at this point if if there's anything before we before we move on to some of the further DNR discussion that we've had.
Any questions? Ms. Bishop.
So I'm comparing your October technical memo to some of your charts in today's presentation. In the technical memo for option 3A, the total present worth for both the 20- and 40-year options was about $1,000 less than the total present worth for the options for 3B. Is that still the case in what you're presenting today? Because some of your other charts in today's presentation show option 3A to be a little bit more expensive than this chart on this page you're showing right now.
Excuse me, you're comparing option 3A to option 3B?
That's correct. And the numbers in your technical memo to the numbers on that chart, which that chart actually doesn't show the actual present net worth value. It just shows somewhere between, I mean, I can't read it, but, you know, 40 million and 50 million.
I can take a closer look at that, but I would honestly say that that these are all equal. At this level of planning, when they're within 1 or 2% like that, that's that's within the margin of error for what we're for what we're estimating. So I couldn't tell you definitively that that any of the options for option 3 are more costly or less costly. I would say for the purpose of this discussion, we would we would just consider be considering them all equal. But I can follow up with with what you're asking, just to make sure that the numbers that we're using are as exact as possible.
Sure. So I guess now that we've monetized the risk per your chart here, what are our final present net worth values for each of these options compared to the October memo? And how have they changed, if at all?
They they should not have changed at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe I can follow up on that one thing I noticed also in the technical memo is that at least one of the tables presented just the capital costs. And I believe the capital costs were more for 3A than B and C. I'm looking at Paul and Travis to see if you recall. And then the O and M costs offset that. So I think if you break break out the capital and the O and M, there was some variation there. But then when you put it all together, that was how I interpret it. So hopefully, I don't know if that was correct or not, but maybe you can clarify.
Yeah, this shows this graph shows the capital cost. So I broken up, we were going to get to the phasing, but so if you just follow the cursor here, option 1 without the phasing, this is just the capital cost. Option 2 without phasing, and then option 3 again, all all very similar. So these are just the capital cost numbers without the total present worth values. But these, none of these numbers should have significantly changed from the October tech memo. What we did add was the risk.
Go ahead.
I think in our last meeting, at least my concern personally, was with the granular system and 3C, that it's too new. We only have, I think, less than six actually operating.
Yes.
So I'm probably going to discount that one. So then between options 3A and 3C, if the costs are, you know, within $1,000 of each other, why does it seem like the discussion has discounted option 3B? I just don't know enough about the technology. Can you shed some light on that?
Yeah, I I think that's mainly been the discussion because the existing site is an oxidation ditch, and it's what staff are familiar with. It's, I mean, both both 3 and B are very tried and true technologies that are that, I mean, they are very common throughout the throughout the U.S. So they're definitely both both viable options. It would, it would, the decision, I think, would likely come down to staff-level discussion on on just the preference of either continuing to run an oxidation ditch plant or or going to something that may be a little bit more difficult to run, but would have more, I guess, sophistication as far as, you know, maybe being able to overcome some operational challenges, just because there's, with the conventional biological nutrient removal systems, there's just more control that the operators can have over their system compared with the oxidation ditch. Oxidation ditches are great. They're they're easy to operate, but but they just may not have as many bells and whistles as the conventional biological nutrient removal plant.
And the oxidation ditches, I don't have it in front of me, but I think that's 3A?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Fields?
Just thinking tonight, if we made a decision or a recommendation of option 3, we wouldn't necessarily have to pick A, B, or C. We can say we want to go this route with a new plant, come back to us with the technology that's preferred, getting staff's input and engineering input. Is that an acceptable path, that what we're need to do tonight?
Yeah, that's fine. 3A is is the general one. They're all within margin, so it's not a significant difference. He hit it on the head when I made, there was actually no recommendation from anybody other than me on the 3A that I knew of. And and the reason I selected 3A is the staff is used to running it. We know it works. I know the last time we did a wastewater treatment plant, we ended up double-dipping on it rather than we, within a 10-year period, we built a new plant. And that's because even RBC was a relatively new product, and it didn't work for us. Now, it works at Johnson Creek, but it didn't work for us. So we ended up having to buy two wastewater treatment plants essentially in a 10-year period. And so that's, we know oxidation ditches work here. We are used to working with them. It's a tried and true product. I know the other system is too, but again, it it changes everything for us, and we start over again from from a learning standpoint.
Okay.
But picking 3 is irrelevant, because they're all within the same margin.
Okay. I think Public Works voted on 3A and option 2, so that discussion was had at at the Public Works Board, I believe. Is that right, Paul?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the city manager made the, has a recommendation letter in our in our notes today for option 3A. All right. Go ahead, Travis. Any other questions? All right, Travis, continue.
Okay. So we wanted to discuss all that evaluation with DNR, so we had another meeting with them and and walked through this evaluation. And DNR followed up after that meeting and provided some some commentary to pass along for this meeting. So they asked that the evaluation consider the likelihood of these risks, and I think all of these risk factors are are very relevant. They acknowledged that moving the plant in 20 years is a relevant risk. They said that they can approve a plan with a 10% higher total present worth cost. I think they'd been using the term 10 to 20% and we're definitely in that range. And they indicated that they could approve any of these three options pending a formal review. So so DNR has not has not closed the door on on any of these options. There was a question following the last Public Works Board meeting about phasing, so I'll touch a little bit on that. The details of phasing would need to be developed based on staff input, but I did provide some preliminary ideas of how that might be accomplished in this table. And as I've mentioned, phasing would likely increase the overall cost of the project by 15 to 25% due to those additional mobilization factors and and the economy scale that that we discussed previously. So first on the left is option 1. Option 1, I've I've broken out by including the most urgent needs based on some of these items have a lack of capacity, such as influent pumping, then then they need to be done now. They can't wait 10 years. So a lot of those types of items I've included in phase 1. And then some items that could potentially be be done 10 years from now are in option 1, phase 2. Now, the the exact details of this may may change after further discussion with with staff and a more detailed review. It may, it may be advantageous to move some of these items from phase 2 to phase 1, but but this is a starting point. So option 1, phase 1, I have here about 12 million, and option 1, phase 2, at 15 million, and that incorporates a 15% factor. And then a similar evaluation for for option 2. The biggest difference here, many of these are are exactly the same, but option 2 has the pump station forced main to the Crawfish River, so that's why the 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 cost is is higher there in in phase 1. But again, there is some flexibility here, depending on how the the final details get discussed with city staff. And this just shows graphically what we were just looking at. So again, broken into the three different phases here between the dashed lines. You can see option 1, phase 1, and phase 2 in these first two bars compared with if the project were to be all done at once and not phased. And then the same, the same type of evaluation there for for option 2. And then there is no phasing shown for option 3. These are just comparing the three different options, and and they are all, you know, within a percentage or or two. And and again, this is only capital cost. This isn't including any any O and M costs here. And then, I guess, last slide before we talk about schedule. Again, there was a question after the the last meeting about how the project could be funded and if there were any grants available, and some questions about sewer rate comparisons. So the the guidance has not been issued yet by the state regarding the Infrastructure and Jobs Act. We're monitoring that. We're seeing that states are beginning to issue some guidance, but we don't have anything from Wisconsin yet. Unfortunately, the the city currently is not eligible for Clean Water Fund principal forgiveness. That is what we typically see for wastewater projects in Wisconsin as far as being able to get grants. That would, this would be the primary source of grants, and that is population and MHI-driven. It's it's a scoring system, and when you put in the city's population and MHI, it it comes out to where the the city's not eligible. Now, that doesn't mean that you're not eligible for low-interest loans through the Clean Water Fund. That we do anticipate being available, and interest rates right now through the Clean Water Fund program are below 2%. That's, I believe, the lowest they've they've ever been. And then the the last part here is a table showing rates, and and I know that's going to be difficult for you to read, but there is a wide range of rates throughout the state that's that's heavily dependent on, you know, the regulations that each community has had to comply with and and the, you know, how how soon it's been since their last major upgrade and, you know, their population. Many factors obviously play into rates. So there's a range of $62 a year to about $1,200 per year, and this was back in 2019 from the surveyed communities. This is definitely not comprehensive of all communities, but it it gives you an idea of of where, or I guess how much these rates can can vary throughout the state. So finally here, this this is my my last slide. It's just an update on the schedule. And the schedule that we're showing here is based on the latest draft permit that was provided by DNR for the plant. There's going to be another public-noticed draft permit that we anticipate being issued in the near future, but this is the latest schedule that we have to work off of. And there's ultimate compliance schedule in here of October 2025. That, you know, it is possible that we can get some relief from that final deadline, depending on how things shake out with the variance request that we're working through. But again, this is the schedule that that we have to work off of at this time. So in order to meet that schedule, that would require construction beginning at the end of 2023, and I'm just working backwards here. So design would need to be done and submitted to to DNR in in April of 2023. And and really, the the planning would need to be completed in the very near future here this spring. So that that is everything I had. Certainly, we can go into questions at this point.
Mr. Fields?
Yeah, if you go back to that slide where you had the the phasing.
This this one?
Yeah. If you took the phasing, say, for option 2, and stacked those, and then put your non-monetary expenses on top of there, just looking at that, that's going to drive rates up considerably more than what option 3 would be in the long run.
Possibly. I haven't, I haven't necessarily done an evaluation of debt being retired, that, you know, if you have debt come off of the debt schedule and then you add it on 10 or 12 years from now, that will certainly play into the rates.
But them same risk factors that were, you showed earlier, still stack on those
Yes.
items.
Yes.
So if you take all them non-monetary and them risk items, that will stack on top of those two phases combined.
Let's quit now.
There seems to be a landslide effort towards options 3, and we heard from Greg earlier about his ideas, which I'm thankful for. Thank you for coming in and doing that for us. I am curious, though, what was the, what was the the other opinions with, I mean, there was a tie? And so what what do the other people like about option 2 that we're not quite seeing or it's not being sold in the way that option 3 is being sold at this time?
I can say from me, Paul can back me up, being that you're there, but I think the biggest, the members there were grappling with the large increase in rates. By going to option 3, you're going to see that rate increase basically immediately because you have the large capital upfront.
Yeah.
But the risk of 2, when you start looking at it, is what is that incremental rate going to, it's still going to get there and possibly even be higher in the long run.
No, I recognize that.
And it's the risk of the unknown. So I think the members were concerned about rates and what the impact's going to be, you know, between the two options, that this maybe buys us some time to do some improvements. I think that was one of their biggest concerns. I think that was one of their biggest concerns was a was a rate impact on the community.
Okay. Paul, do you have anything?
I'd agree with that. And the discussion was very much along the lines of how, how can, how can we ease into this? You know, it wasn't a question of whether or not we have to do it, we have to do it. But what, what is the easiest thing for the ratepayers to absorb? One of the other parts of that was if we do something minimal, if you will, for the next 20 years, what technologies might become available that change this? And that could happen. The the only real givens we have is or are that the D, the DNR will be changing or will be adjusting our phosphorus discharge limits. And as the city grows, capacity will be an issue. So beyond that, you know, we were kind of wide open to what can happen. But I I would agree with Steve that it really was the rate impact for both short term and long term. And by the way, that also kind of prompted a discussion about whether or not we could actually start increasing rates now. If we go to option three, if we could start increasing rates now in preparation for that.
That was going to be my next question was what was the next step if, when we make a decision about this, can we then throw it back to having a discussion about in what way this is going to get implemented in a financial way for our citizens to know that this is coming? Because there is that concern, of course. Nobody wants to spend, nobody wants to buy the luxury vehicle. But if they have to buy the luxury vehicle because that's what's best for the family, you know, then other sacrifices need to be made. Or how do we finance this particular need? You know, do we do credit cards? You know, there's, there's different, there's ways around it. And so I hear what you're saying about grants and things of that nature. I'm just wondering, since this is so preliminary, do we have a, not terribly preliminary in this way, but we are now at the point where we have to make a decision. And when we make a decision, I want to make a decision that's based on the information that we can use to help our citizens feel comfortable knowing that this is going to be ultimately the best choice for us. Yes, this is how it's going to be. It's going to be expensive, and this is how it's going to happen. So is there, is there some kind of plan about how that financial impact is going to be disseminated?
I think, well, Steve, go ahead.
With that, with our discussions at the Public Works Board, I I voted, it was very, it was a public meeting, so I voted in favor of three options. One of the big things for me in being familiar with DMR and stuff, moving the plant is the only option that gives us a brand new permit. Getting a new permit will relax some of our requirements because we're not allowed to backslide if we stay on our existing site. So it might allow us some more leverage with our water discharge permit now going into the the river instead of the creek. So that was one of the big items, plus the technology and things coming. If we stay on with option one or two, we're still going to be restrained, even if we upgrade with the existing permit that we have. It can only get stricter. They won't loosen anything up.
I'm sorry if I didn't seem like I was understanding that. I totally understand that. What I'm looking at is, okay, so we decide on on option three, okay? And to everyone who is looking at this PowerPoint or looking at the information that's provided, you're looking at a huge jump in cost. So what I'm wondering is, is what is the schedule for how we're going to help make sure that our citizens don't see a dramatic jump in their costs? Or if how we're, if we're going to do it in a steady, you know, paced way? And if there's a plan for that yet?
There, there's not a plan for that in in the fact that, well, first, we haven't selected an option. And second of all, that, that the conversation about phased, the conversation about the other types of financing is in flux. And so being able to say exactly, we have provided as good a data as you're probably going to find available. How we're going to finance that then is if we go with three, option three, one of those three, you're going to have to, we're going to start looking for grants. It's going to give us an idea of what we're looking at. So we're going to be out looking at the infrastructure bills, the current clean water opportunities, things along that line. We will look at what our current impact fees allow, how we can amend our facilities requirement studies to gain additional impact fees. We'll look at the possibility of increasing the rates slowly now and and saving up some money before we actually have to start implementing. The MB, the MDV may play into this a little bit. Let's say we select three, that's still, because we don't have to meet the phosphorus requirements on that deadline, it gives us a little bit of time to say, hey, before that final, that first piece of major equipment needs to be replaced, we can hold out a little bit longer, have our rates up a little bit more, find out where there's more money options along those lines, maybe see what happens with the cost of materials and and deliverables. So there's a lot that plays into this. I'm going to tell you where my mind went when we did this. Three A will work under all conditions. One and two have a significant amount of risk tied to them where you will lose them. So when you're evaluating the risk and you're saying, this wastewater treatment plant will, this is the cost that we'll have associated with it, this one is the cost that we have, we'll spread it out over a certain amount of time. So you do phase one, phase two, phase three. Phase three is the last phase. You've got to get 20 years out of that plant after that. So if that's done, if you're 15, you're now at 35 years. If you're at 35 years on that existing site, the chances that you're going to be able to survive on that site are are really starting to decrease. So now what you've done is you've taken all those costs that you've tied into the existing plant and shifted them forward to tie into the new plant. So now you have maybe 20, $25 million in the existing plant plus $50 million in the new plant. So now you're shifting forward $75 million, not $50 million. So what, what you're looking at is generally, when you're looking at intergenerational costs, you're generally looking at how much do you save up and how much do you borrow? Because there's a certain amount of contribution from people that are never going to use the wastewater treatment plant versus if you paid it all in cash from the money that these people have, these people back here that are taking advantage of it wouldn't have any costs. So now you're evaluating how much money you put in at the beginning, how much money you borrow in order to be able to have that intergenerational cost determined. In this case, it's a little bit different. What you're doing is selecting an option that has the higher possibility of shifting 25 million additional dollars onto the 50 million. So you now have taken a cost that should have been $50 million and you made it 75. And that's what I looked at when I started talking about intergenerational costs. So when you're looking at, and at, three A has, in my opinion, the least amount of risk tied to it. It has the highest amount of cost in the front end, but it has the least amount of risk in the long term.
Ms., do you have follow up?
I think Ms. Culler may not have spoken on this issue.
Oh, well, I, I guess I wanted to, I have a question, I think, maybe for Travis, but I wanted to follow up on the first part of your remarks there, Steve, because I, I think we're all concerned about the big rate increases and and the shock that it's going to be to all of our ratepayers and every, every option available to us is going to have that to a greater or lesser extent. My, I was going to slightly rephrase a question. I think you've largely answered it, but my, you know, I, I'm concerned about the rate increase, especially for those in our community who can least afford that. And so I want to know that the city staff are going to pursue, you know, all possible strategies to, with respect to funding and timing and all of that, you know, no matter what we decide, and to minimize the burden on taxpayers. It's going to be an increase, you know, no question about that. But I just, I hope that the staff will pursue all of the things that you've described and anything else that might be out there to, you know, to do what we can to minimize that burden.
I think you can, there, there are two phases to the question, and one of them is, we pursue every option we have. City of Lake Mills, from the standpoint of economics, hasn't had a great opportunity, but we've received a lot of state and federal money over the last 20 years in comparison to a lot of cities in Jefferson County, even though we don't hit the usual low to moderate income requirements. We will continue to pursue down that line. We will continue to look at all our options. We always have. We use every option that we have available to us. The other one is, you know, the people who are at least able to afford. Those are other things that you can look at from the standpoint of the city council dealing with it or making sure, because we generally work with people on on finding who can provide funds to them to help them with their utility costs. And one of the things that we do is, any money that comes in goes against water and sewer immediately. And electric is the last one that's held out. And that's because generally you can get more financial assistance for electric than you can for the rest of them. So, but continue to carry on with that. We would look at, you know, if there are any, if that wastewater becomes something for someone they can't handle, then we, we'd go down that route. But the vast majority of our wastewater users also have our electric.
Yeah, not to be real redundant. We, we talked about that, and I appreciate your call earlier. Everything is triggered by the electric utility, although all three of them are on the same bill. But it's not triggered until the electric one is in trouble. But the other point I want to make is that because they're all together, we look at them as a group. And so we realize that when people look at that bill, that bottom line is all they see. They don't really break it down necessarily to water, electric, and sewer. So we not only pay attention to sewer rates, but the electric and water rates also. And our hope is that we can maintain those rather steady so that we don't have a triple burden or something like that. But then the other part of that, and I think Travis touched on it, we're not totally aware what's in all of this, the infrastructure bill. We got a brief on it, I think I mentioned this to some of you, we got a brief on it that's 456 pages long. So it's taken us a little while to get through that. But, but there are funds available for water and clean water and that sort of thing. So we'll certainly take a look at any options we've got. And, and again, the technologies may change. There may be, maybe dollars come available for exploring new technologies. I know that that was kind of what we talked about with that three C option. So this is, there's time, is going to elapse between now and when this is built, and it may not quite look like what we're talking about right now. So we'll definitely stay in touch with it.
I want to note that you also have hydrant rental and garbage collection on the bill. Just.
Thank you, thank you for that, because I think, you know, the people that are watching and listening, you know, we, we want to reassure them that the city is mindful of this and that, you know, we'll do everything we can to minimize that burden. The other question I had was related to, I, I think we're all anticipating that future growth in the city will likely be to the north and the east. And I think there, from what I was reading, it does seem like there are some disadvantages with option two, if that's the direction of growth. Were, in your cost calculations, if, if, if that is where the growth occurs, I'm assuming there's going to be lift stations, other types of infrastructure to get back to the existing plant site if option two is, is chosen, were those costs factored in or included?
No, those, the infrastructure for interceptors and lift stations and and local sewers were not included for the, for the areas of new development. We did consider that, including that in the risk evaluation, but it was extremely difficult to compare the, the cost of sewer infrastructure going to the new treatment plant location, which we don't know where it would be at, versus new sewer infrastructure going to the existing plant. There, there'd be a cost for each of those. Intuitively, I, I believe that you could find a way to make a strategic location of the new site to facilitate development north of the interstate. But at this high level, it was, it was really difficult to, to put a dollar value to that. And, you know, we didn't want to, to overstate that benefit for, for option three. So, so basically, we, we didn't include any of those costs to, to favor it one way or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Bishop?
Assuming we begin construction at the end of next year, what's the approximate timeline of completion to build one of these things at a new site?
It would be at least two years.
Okay, so two years. And then what upgrades would we have to do to our current site in the meantime? Do we know? And do we have an approximate cost to that?
I, I, I don't have an answer for that other than you would just minimize it to, to absolute bare bones, I would, I would imagine.
Well, the, my answer, my part of the answer would be the MDV. This variance that we are granted would be based on the fact that we are billing facilities. And so we know that our phosphorus limit would not change during that time, and that that's of great benefit to us. And as, as long as the capacity, you know, we're good there, I would say our costs will stay pretty steady. Now, I, the caveat I'll put out there is that pretty much every week, because of the age of the plant, something breaks. And so we're hoping like heck that nothing too major breaks in the time period. But even then, a lot of the stuff is, is quickly repairable or we can work around or something like that. So I would say, I would say the cost in the two years to get a new plant up and running would be fairly controllable.
What about, we use alum to help control the phosphorus, right? So would that, changing that amount we use or how we use it, impact that? Now, I know we're at a pretty low level and we're getting lower. That's, you know, at one point, I knew we couldn't measure it. Now, I, technology's changed enough, we can. Is that going to impact it?
Yeah, we, we would definitely need to work with Bill down at the plant to find that sweet spot between adding, adding chemical down to a reasonable level so that you'd minimize your amount of payments into the variance program. So I would hope that we could do that fairly cost effectively.
The alum addition also creates a lot of additional sludge. So sludge capacity would also then be a problem?
Yeah, that is, that is definitely a, a concern. That's, there, there's very minimal space left for, for biosolids storage. One of the near-term projects would be adding biosolids storage, but, but even then, that's not a permanent long-term solution, which might require that off-site storage.
Right, that's, that's one of the biggest problems with the existing site is off-site requirements.
And I just want to caution, we're talking about status quo. If something were to happen where a large industrial customer came in and had some pretty significant sewage issues, that would change the ballgame pretty drastically. So, anyway.
My next question was, what are, what is the life expectancy of a brand new plant in a site that we want that's big enough with brand new technology?
I mean, typically, conservatively for the structures, we say that they last 40 years for, for piping and structures. Equipment, we typically put on a 20-year replacement schedule. You know, now sometimes equipment lasts longer than that. You, you can see that the, a lot of the equipment that, that's at the existing site has, has made it to 30 years but is now failing. So to be conservative, we, we like to plan for a 20-year replacement of equipment. And, you know, after 40 years, it's not like you're going to have to replace all the tanks and everything, but they may begin to require rehab at that point. But, but in general, being conservative, I'd say 20 years for equipment and 40 years for, for piping and concrete structures.
About, I'd say, what, six years ago? Maybe, maybe eight. We did some substantial rehab on the oxidation ditches. They must take more abuse than the rest of the equipment, huh?
Yeah.
I got some follow-up questions. Paul, you touched on the conditional approval from the W D N R. And I think that letter was dated January twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-two, so it's a pretty recent letter. Can you go into, it's, it's hard as an average person to read that letter and understand what it actually means. Can you go into that a little bit?
Yeah.
Somebody?
I'm a really simple guy, so I can do that.
All right.
I think the, the key is probably up in one of the early paragraphs where they identify the fact that to comply with the phosphorus limits that they are going to impose, for lack of a better word, if it means a significant investment in plant or new plant, and if that creates a financial hardship, then we get a little extension on the time to do it. Doesn't mean that it's going away, but we get a little more time to figure out how we're going to do it. And we had to actually kind of do a little back and forth with the D N R to get them to agree to the fact that we, we fit into those categories. But what it means, and help me with my dates here, Travis, I think it, it just delays, or we, we get a five-year period in the, the Peds permit to comply? Am I tying this together properly?
Okay, so the, the next step in, in this process would be the D N R needs to issue a draft public notice permit. And, and there's an opportunity there, you know, for, for the public and environmental groups and, and whoever to comment on it. So the, the approval of the variance would need to survive that process and then get put into a final permit. The, the M D V is only relevant to the phosphorus compliance. And, and there's a whole, you know, there's a whole list here of things that are, you know, the only one line on here is related to phosphorus. So there, there's many needs at the plant. So I just want to make sure that, that, that that's clear. So the, the, the multi-discharger variance allows for an extension on meeting just the phosphorus limit. And it allows up to three permit terms in order to do that. And each permit term is, is five years. Another caveat being, though, that.
Was this our first one?
Yes, this would be the first.
So there is a possibility for two more permits that would bump us out another?
Five years.
Five and five, so it'd be a total of fifteen years.
Possibly.
Okay.
Another caveat being, though, that the M D V is up for review and approval by E P A in two thousand and twenty-seven. So we believe the program will be renewed, but there's no, there's no guarantees on that. So again, it, it would, it would, basically what it's doing is, we've, right now, we've got this strict two thousand and twenty-five deadline for phosphorus. It, it will delay that at least until two thousand and twenty-seven, when the, when the M D V gets renewed and possibly for another ten years beyond that. But it, it really doesn't change the discussion as far as needing to do all these upgrades, because these are all independent of, of the phosphorus limit. And even if the M D V does get renewed, it's not a permanent solution. The D N R still expects you to have a plan in place for meeting that final limit once the M D V is expired for your facility.
But, but hardship is, is an acceptable, is an acceptable reason to apply for these permits?
Yep.
Yep. And that's why we've applied.
Okay.
But the, the, the question remains is, is that are you going to invest the, you know, twenty-six million dollars in the plant, hoping that you get to extend those? Because you're going to have to make some capital improvements in the existing plant.
Right.
So don't, don't look at that extension as saying, it gives you some additional time to hold off on making the decision, but it's not going to be out past twenty-seven, in my opinion. You're going to have to build some capital facilities.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand what conditions we're operating under and where, where we need to make decisions and what timeframe.
If I may, I would say, too, that if we don't make any progress, the D N R will not give us another variance. So it's not like, okay, now you have five years to just sit there. They've got to see progress.
Okay. In past discussions, we've outlined that option three would raise our fees from an average of five hundred dollars to thirteen hundred dollars a year.
No, to eight hundred dollars.
No.
What I had heard was thirteen hundred dollars. It was an eight hundred dollar increase.
So it's three hundred dollars a year.
So right now, you're at five hundred. That's the, the black line. So that, yes, option three is about twelve hundred and fifty.
And option two is what?
Option two is about one thousand and fifty.
But then if you go to the next slide where you are, where you broke down the other investments, which would happen with, with option number two, that there would be future investments, it ultimately becomes equal, wouldn't you say?
The non-monetary?
Yeah. No, I'm, I was, sorry, I must have closed it.
He, he was talking about the fifteen percent additional for mobiles.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah. Yes. Yeah. So if you were to add fifteen percent to that, yes, you would get, yeah, you'd be extremely close to, to option three. Again, not taking into account things like maybe debt coming off the books and, and things like that.
Okay, so, so we're looking at about, from our current rate, if we go with option three, we're looking at about a hundred and fifty percent increase in fees for wastewater, sewer fees, basically?
Yes.
Okay, that's substantial. All right. So I, I did some additional research, because I, I looked at the comparables that you presented. And, and I basically said, all right, let's look at some comparables. And I can pull this information up on, on the website, which I can do for Lake Mills. So I looked at Lake Mills, Delafield, Cottage Grove, Slinger, Milton, and Evansville. And I got a range of three hundred and thirty-seven dollars in sewer fees for annual to six hundred and forty-five. This was based on five thousand gallons of use per month. Lake Mills came out at five hundred and fifty-three dollars based on these calculations. So three of these municipalities were below us, and two of them were above us. Again, the highest one was six hundred and forty-five dollars. If we go to one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, we're double the comparable. The highest comparable will be double that fee. So as I look at this, I think option two and option one are not acceptable. Option three is our best bet, but it's not acceptable under these current conditions. I cannot, I cannot pass this type of fee onto the citizens of Lake Mills and say, hey, you have to pay a hundred and fifty percent more for your sewer fees. We need to figure out something to drive this cost down. We need to find some grants. We need to find something. But there's no way I can justify voting for this tonight. That's just where I'm at.
The one, and I'm not going to ask you to vote for it. I'm comfortable with that. The one thing I would ask is, where do they discharge?
Good question. I don't know the answer to those. But those are, are five other good comparables in my book.
Yeah, because the discharge location is a huge difference in most of the comparables. When you look at our creek and what it's classified as, and what the release rate was, and what the release rate was this year, and how often that's going to continue to happen in the future, the creek is going to be, the, the assimilative capacity of the creek is zero, and it's getting smaller. And so if you're looking at.
And it's an important resource that we should take care of.
Right. And so if you're looking at that in comparison to maybe Fox River, or one of the rivers over that Cottage Grove would be dumping into, what are the, what are the limits that they're facing in comparison to what we're facing, and the risks that they're facing in dumping into that location, or discharging into that location in comparison to ours? That would be an important question. And that really could be a, a significant driver in the risk, because, like I said, you could be taking the hundred and fifty and shifting it up to two hundred or two hundred and fifty if you, if you're uncareful about that.
I also wonder if any of those communities are facing the same decision that we are tonight in having to, you know, these phosphorus standards have been in place for, what, about ten years? So everybody's needing to anticipate that. And so those communities may be grappling with the same thing we are tonight.
I'm absolutely sure they are. I don't, I don't know to what extent, but the phosphorus levels are not just for Lake Mills. They're across, well, they're national, really.
And I understand we need to be good, good stewards to the environment. And, you know, we, we need to look out for the next generations, as Mr. Wilkie pointed out in his letter. But at the same time, I mean, the economy is tough right now, and people are having a hard time making ends meet. And for us to say, boom, we're going to boost your, we're going to boost your sewer from five hundred to one thousand two hundred and fifty, I don't know where that extra seven hundred and fifty dollars a year is coming from. But it's, it's hard for people to come up with that kind of money. So.
I, I guess I would just add that this is somewhat unique in the constraints that you're facing on the existing site location. And, you know, not, not everyone has that constraint. And, you know, the, the last thing that we would want to do is, is say, yeah, everything's fine. Keep, keep upgrading on this site, and then, and then come to you in fifteen years and, and realize that, you know, this had never been discussed. So I think this is great that we're having this discussion, and we, we have all this information in, in, in front of us now. But I do recognize it's, it's a, it's a very difficult decision. But that, that, that's one, a kind of nuance that, that other facilities may not be in this exact position.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of unknowns, and I respect that.
I imagine Cottage Grove will be on it pretty quick with the Amazon facility going in there. Their growth and changes in their economics are going to push their wastewater treatment plant pretty hard. Although I think that they have a bigger river.
Mrs. Bishop?
I share my council member's concerns with the rate hike increase for our citizens and for ourselves as well. That's substantial. Going back to the technical memorandum, it says, based on that high-growth scenario, it appears the existing plant will no longer have adequate space at the end of the forty-year period evaluation. And I'm comparing that to Travis's statement that the life expectancy of a new plant is twenty years for equipment and forty years for the concrete structure. So my concern is that in forty years, regardless of which way we go, whether we stay at the new location or go to the new, stay at the old location or go to the new one, we're facing significant overhaul of a system yet again. And so it just seems to be a never-ending problem. And I'm wondering if we can't merge some of these options. I wish the council or the city had, you know, ten or fifteen years ago, started acquiring land for a new site. I think a new site is, as Travis was just saying, imperative in the next forty years. So is there a way to do option one or two, to have our current location for, you know, thirty, twenty to thirty years, while we start acquiring that land now, knowing that land is always at a premium and always in demand? And so when we're looking at the situation again in twenty years, we already have the site, or we've already started discharging before we have to build? I don't know if that's a solution. I know you started looking at the cost of, okay, let's say we stay here forty years, and now we have that generational cost that Mr. Wilkie was talking about. So I am sensitive to that as well, and not wanting to rebuild the same thing. But is there a way to, to take pieces of these options, and then in that way, stair-step the cost increase, and not have it be all at once?
Mr. Wilkie?
Actually, we looked at purchasing land in two thousand and four and made a recommendation. Some of the land was landfill. Some of the land had environmental contamination, and some of the land was residential. We did an appraisal on the residential land, and it came in at two and a half million dollars, which is more than what Travis put in now. And that was, you know, sixteen years ago. And now, on top of that, you would have to go through the condemnation process. So you're going to add a guaranteed fifteen percent on the top of the purchase. And then you're going to have to pay for the relocation and find adequate or similar relocation sites.
You're talking about if we start moving into the mobile home park. Because either way, what you're talking about is we have to acquire land. I'm seeing, do what we have to at the current location that doesn't get us up to within fifty feet of the mobile home park. I don't want to displace those residents either in our community, especially when we already have a housing problem. But doing the, the ten to fifteen million dollar option here that gets us to twenty years, which in twenty years, we'd have to be doing significant renovations at the new site anyway, buying land as we can get it, and then being prepared in twenty years to put in that new site, as opposed to doing it in the next five.
So buying land at the three site?
Right.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, it does mitigate some of the problems. Does, I don't believe it does all of them, but it does some of them.
I appreciate those, those suggestions and that kind of creativity. I think the things that I'm really struggling with, with option two, one or, or two, are just the sunk costs. There's just not going to be any way to recover those. And I think the risk of needing to build something sooner than forty years is, is great. So I'm not sure that it makes sense to wait that long. I do agree that, yeah, we need to be looking for property for a new site now, regardless of which direction we go, because it's not going to get easier to find a site and acquire a site as our community grows and other places grow.
And I guess this brings me back around, full circle to the, to the comment I was making before was, we really need to have a plan of how the financials are going to get taken care of. And that, that right there is a huge deciding. I mean, that was the deciding factor for the Public Works Board, and you can hear it here. It's, it's a, it's a, a burden that we don't want our citizens to bear on such a, a grand scale. So, you know, we got creative solutions coming from Ms. Bishop with regard to, maybe we do it in pieces, or how can we do this in a different way, or do we do this in a different way? And really, what it boils down to is, how can we make it so that this is still a community that, that, that takes on these types of challenges in an economic and safe way? And how are we going to help our citizens feel that we are doing what's in their best interest by doing that?
Well, from the financial standpoint, we've given you kind of the worst-case scenarios, that it's, it's a hundred percent borrowed funds and put into the rates. To be able to say that we, you know, how are we going to apply for, or find out that we're going to qualify for grants without having something to put before? And that's, it's kind of the chicken or the egg. You want to know what it's going to cost. And we can't tell you what it's going to cost until we have something to put forward. And so it's, at least from the standpoint of, of starting the planning. I just think that we were thinking that, you know, picking at least three gave us something to work with. Even two would give us something to work with. Even if we had to adjust, if we get the M D V, we're in, we got a little bit more time to come back and say we got something. But you're going to invest a significant amount of money just to get to the point where we can put forward a financial plan, because you're going to have to have a. to have a lot of engineering work. And the difference in costs and the risks and all that really starts to, to weigh in on how we're going to make a decision. Cause once we go with two, there's such a a commitment to the existing site that we, I believe we would be in the best, I showed you a lot of plans of moving into the trailer park. I think in the long run, you're going, that's going to be your best option if you stay with two. With two, you end up with limits, restrictions, your backslide limit restrictions. So you, you know, your risk goes up there. So how do you, how do you interpret that? And how do you apply that to the decision? I can tell you that impact fees and how to adjust the impact fees, we can, we can have a pretty good idea how much we're going to have available to us there. And over the term of the life, you could probably collect, probably have $700,000 or $800,000 with the impact fees now. And over the term of the, the life of the plant, you could probably continue to collect, you know, 60 or $70,000 a year to apply towards the debt. But that's such a, you know, that depends on how many billing permits you put out every year. And that rises and falls so significantly based on certain issues that everything we do would be a, a real estimate. So. And even to continue to press, it's at least another 30 days before we hear anything on the B I L.
The, the permit?
No, the, the infrastructure bill.
Oh, I, I don't know the timing on that. Sorry.
I think it's, I think we heard the end of March before we know about water, wastewater. So, but your timeline up there?
Oh. Did you have something you wanted to interject, Mrs. Bishop?
Well, I can while Mr. Wilkie is looking at the next steps. I guess regardless of what happens tonight, we're probably not going to make a decision on the three options, cost being our most significant concern. But we're going to need land regardless, whether it's in two years, 20 years, 40 years. So how do we authorize the city to start going ahead and looking at those options, putting forth that cost? You're going to need, I mean, they were saying engineers, you need surveys, you're going to need legal representation. I don't know if Mr. Drescher does it all himself or not. So how do we at least start moving forward on that piece? Is that feasible within the next month or so?
Yeah, we can, we can start moving forward with that. There, we'll put together the cost and get the right people. We use, we already have a FERC that we use for acquiring property. We can get an idea of how much land we're going to need. Are, are we going to go with the minimum amount? Are we going to buy a, a larger amount?
Well, I thi- I think whether you go with two or three A, we're at least going to have to run pipes somewhere, starting that process and then picking a discharge site at least. And then whatever the discharge site is, whether it's option two or three A, if we move into three A, we would build at that discharge site. So we kind of are narrowing down where we're going to be at least in those costs for the land. Aren't we?
But our discharge would be the same if we went with, with, with two A?
No.
It would be different.
Well, they would be different.
Different sites.
They'd be different.
They're different plans.
That changes it a little bit.
Three, three would have an absolute.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, three is looking at ultimately having all gravity flow. So we get rid of all the, as many lift stations as possible from the existing site. Two would look at being pumped permanently. So what we would do is there are easements along a route that's the most direct for two. We would pretty much follow Rock Creek right to the Crawfish for three.
So your estimation of the land we would have, whether it's by easement or condemnation, would change whether it's two A or three also? Okay. So I wasn't getting that piece.
Yeah. So, yeah, option two and option three, you really can't look at land and the systems, they're, they're kind of totally different. They're standalone. So you can't necessarily buy property for, to use for either one. It's going to be one or the other.
Right. I understand that.
Yeah, that's kind of why I said two kind of locks us into being, moving into the trailer park. Whereas three gives us a, a larger option because it's out in a, in a much more agricultural area. And we, we can buy a larger piece of property and not have to worry about residential properties.
Okay. I was thinking you would be pumping whatever it is the same direction regardless of whether it was two or three. And I see that that's not the case now. Okay.
Did you find what you wanted on the timeline?
I'm going to have to ask Travis's, if we don't make a decision tonight, what kind of, are we going to have to come back with?
I guess hope the M D V gets approved. We'll have to talk to D N R about it. Because again, this is, this is their latest pre-draft version. This is, I guess I can only guess at what is going to be in the next draft. We haven't seen it yet. So we could either have a preemptive discussion with D N R or we could wait for the next draft permit to come out and then talk to them about the schedule.
I would think that a meeting like this is kind of evidence of the hardship when you're in front of the D N R, you know, having this difficult time making a decision based on the costs that are imminent under this process. So I'm pretty confident that the M D V is going to be granted. That's just me.
Mr. Fields?
I believe the first one will be two, but maybe I'm a little too optimistic.
I know from talking through construction issues that we're all very concerned and everybody is concerned. I mean, that was with the Public Work Board. It was all about the rates and the impact. How do we minimize this? How do we drive it down? Our best bet with a new plant, you're going to probably qualify for more grants, more subsidies. It's going to open up the door more so than remodeling an existing plant. So our option of getting money is better with option three. The other thing with trying to phase and do small chunks, it's just like trying to remodel little pieces of your house at the same time. And if you do it in little chunks, in the end, it costs you a lot more money. It just does. It just, scale of construction, materials are not going down, they're going up. Honestly, the sooner you lock in on materials right now, the better off you are. They're just going to continue to go up. So the more we delay, the more we look at this, them costs are going to continue to creep up no matter what option you go.
With option three, even if you're redoing the equipment in the 20 and 40-year timeline that you were talking about, we still have the land. And so we have that space to, assuming we acquire a piece big enough for our foreseeable future, we always have that regardless of what actual physical equipment is on there. Is that, I mean, would you see us ever moving a, a location ever again in the next 100 years?
No, likely not.
I would hope the answer is no. Okay.
Yeah, if we plan right, we'll have the opportunity to get enough land to predict future growth. Instead of trying to build it in the middle of a residential industrial area, we can get away from that area. So we do give ourselves a buffer for growth.
Yeah, we also, we're not going to find a bigger body of water to, to discharge into than the Crawfish. So it wouldn't be worth moving. So if you get enough land, which should be possible at this point in time and, and get it up on that body of water, you, you're going to have the best world for discharging wastewater in the Lake Mills area.
So no action is also a decision. I understand Mr. Waters completely, your concerns. If we wait another meeting, two meetings, can we set forth the exact information that we want that would trigger us to make a different decision than no decision?
Well, let me lay out the options as I see it right now. The motion tonight is Ms. Quinnhouse. So she can complete the motion by picking an option and then we would need to vote on that. Or we can choose to table for tonight. I'd like to see us put some type of timeline on that table. Is it 60 days, 90 days? So that we keep the action moving forward and hopefully we'll help the D N R understand that, that we are still working on this and, and working on the issue. And hopefully we could have maybe a work session to kind of hash through some of the details and, and bring some things to light of what we're looking for, the type of answers we need to, to move forward on this issue. Does that make sense? From the staffing standpoint, those options?
They make sense. They're, they're difficult.
There's hesitation from Paul tonight.
They're, they're, they're difficult. Fully understand everything you're saying. What's happening though is that we're going to meetings every month and, and every time the request is can you give us more time? And I understand that you need more time. This is a $50 million discussion. But what we're not getting, and I, I, I hope this comes out right. I don't mean to be rude. What we're not getting is some good direction as to what should we start to pursue? What information is it that you do want? Is it, you know, should we really be focusing on the rates and if those are mitigatable, if that's a word? You mentioned the comparables. Should we see if other communities are struggling with the same thing and how are they addressing it? I guess we, what I'm saying is, boy, I really could use a little more direction in what you want and what kind of information we can get you.
I guess I'd just like to comment, as, as difficult as this is and we're all struggling with it, and I think we're all trying to do the best that we can for the community. I don't know what other information the staff could provide us with any, that, that really could be, have a good, clear enough crystal ball to be any better than what we already have. There are a lot of unknowns. There are a lot of things that are hard to predict. Any of these options, the costs could be lower or higher. There's no way to know if we're going to get grants unless we choose an option. So the staff can apply for a grant. So it, it, I just, I'm not, I guess I would not really lean toward tabling it because I don't know what else are we looking, what other information are we looking for? It's not going to make, I don't know what other information they could provide us that would help us make this decision to give a direction. But if, if other people have ideas, I, I'd like to hear it. But I, I can't think of what other information they could provide.
I would tend to agree because we can't predict rates unless we can start moving to get grants and do our things. We need to get an option. So we can start trying to see if there's a way to drive that number down. Cause driving the capital cost down is the only way you're going to adjust the rates down. And until we start digging into the permitting and potential grants and our things, but we have to have an option selected to do that.
I don't know. To me, it seems backwards. You, you, you need to understand what your costs are before you approve something. I, I don't agree with approving something and then hoping that you're going to get grant money and then maybe throwing out this expense to the community. I, I don't understand that. I mean, we, we need to have more information before we can make that type of decision.
Yeah. In our, in our case though, we've done the worst-case scenario, which is, you know, like you would in the business, this is, this is the cost. This is what I'm going to have to charge. Now, we get to look at other options. We can add grants and impact fees and those types of things. So it's not, it's not as clear because they come on the backend rather than the frontend. But, and I can tell you that at least from my point of view, I'm not bright enough to do that analysis. But maybe by the first, I could have a conversation with L R S and see what they could do for us.
Okay.
They're our financial advisors and they, if anybody has the ability to do it, they would. I mean, Travis has provided us all the costs. And they would be able to give me an idea if anybody can figure that out.
So to bring this back to the business world, if I developed a product that was 150% more than my competitors, there's no way I'm going to bring that to market. It's just not going to sell.
That's why wastewater treatment plants are generally owned by governments.
That was a good comment, but go ahead, Ms. Quinnhouse.
It's a, it's a hard to follow comment. I mean, mic drop for you. I guess where I was, what I was looking for was the fee schedule, but like based on what my council member partners have said, that, that doesn't look like it's going to be something that we can obtain until we know the information, which we're not going to be able to get unless we say, yep, let's go ahead and go and, and, you know, bite the bullet. But the, the question I have now is, okay, so let's say I amend this, this motion and we put forth an option and we vote on it and it passes. And along the way, there are, I'm playing the what-if game and I probably shouldn't, but I'm going to do it anyway. Along the way, there are things that we didn't anticipate in terms of what, you know, what's been presented here? What do we know as what we have? Now there's new things, new things, new things. Is this plan adjustable? Can we take it and look at, like similar to what Ms. Bishop was saying, if we have this information or if we've, we've done this request and we know that these are the costs that, that we have, but then, then something else is in the way or something else comes up because you know something always does. Do we have the option of being able to amend or to modify the plan in some form or another?
Yes. Now, the question should be added, can we say three and drop back to two?
No, I don't think we can.
That would probably be more difficult, although not impossible. But could we look at, I, from my standpoint, three is just giving us a direction to start designing. And from that standpoint, there are going to be so many things that we're going to learn between now and the point in time where we actually have something that we're looking at. Telling you this is what the wastewater treatment plant is, that's a long way down the road. I'll probably never see it.
I think what some of these comments are getting at is we can't even go out and get R F Ps until we choose a plan. And from the R F Ps, then you can start fine tuning some of those other details that will control cost a little bit more perhaps. The second thing I wanted to say was just the other option out there was regionalization and combining municipalities to have a waste, a regional wastewater treatment plant. And that was dismissed out of hand by our technical memo. And I, I'm not privy necessarily to all the prior discussion that may have gone into regionalization, but that's just the only other option that has not been discussed at all. And when I asked last time, it was because that was the most expensive option. And I don't know if there's any other way to bring that back in line so that it's no longer the most expensive option. Has anything changed since that was initially dismissed?
I, I would say nothing has changed. We'll, we'll run into kind of the same evaluation of having to do a huge expansion somewhere, you know, whether it's.
Jefferson would be the only option.
Mills or, or somewhere else. So the costs would shift from one location to another. Plus you'd have to have eight or 10-mile forest main and all the energy costs associated with that. You know, it would, it would make sense if, if there was a huge plant five miles from here that, that could handle this, this type of flow, no problem. You know, if, if Madison Met was two miles away, this would probably be a different discussion. But, but that's just not the case.
Would there ever be an option to build it so other municipalities could decide later on to hook on to ours and then distribute the cost that way? I guess anything is possible.
It's possible. You would just run into an expensive forest main. But it, it is possible.
Jefferson County is still rural enough that that's probably not an option. If, let's say there was a significant amount of development, we in Milford and what's the next one up A?
Waterloo?
Hubbleton?
Or Hubbleton?
No, no. Which one?
Waterloo?
No, wherever, wherever the steakhouse is there on A. Anyways.
Oh, Milford, no.
Not Milford. Grouton?
Yeah, could be. Anyways, if there were a significant amount of development there and they decided to go with wastewater treatment, they could, they could come back. But at this point in time, Waterloo has theirs up on the, up north. But at this point in time, Waterloo has theirs up on the, up north, at least nine miles north of us. Jefferson is 10 miles south of us, through a substantial amount of development. And if we went to Jefferson, they would have to do a significant expansion, which I don't know if they even have room for.
Creek? What about Creek?
Johnson Creek.
Creek discharges into the rock, but we would have to go a lot further, under two rivers, to get to Creek. And they have an RFP, an RFP system, which we, didn't work for us. And depending on how our sewage works, it may, it may be a problem for them.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, regionalization was one that we, we did talk about. We evaluated the locations of the existing wastewater treatment plants, and the sizes of them, and they, they were just not reasonable options. Probably, it would be nice if Cottage Grove were a little closer, then we could dump into the Madison Metro. But we really didn't have any option for regionalization. That was just, we were kind of the, we're going to end up being kind of the regionalization in the long run.
So one, one thought I had, as we're, as we're talking about maybe how to step forward with this, is the, the next step is development of a draft facilities plan, that, you know, that needs to happen regardless of what option is picked. Maybe one possibility is to proceed with a draft facility plan for one of these options, work with Lers, wait for some of this funding guidance to come out as we're developing that draft facilities plan, and if you don't like the results, you could change direction on what was decided once that draft plan is developed. If you were to change direction, obviously, there would be rework of that plan to, to pursue a different option, but that, that could get us going down a path to, to get down to another level of, of detail.
I think I'd hate to incur that cost before we know what our, what, what option we're leaning towards. So any other questions or comments tonight? All right, so now it's action time.
So I will make a motion to amend motion 22-2-2-2, to fill in this, the blank space where Direct City Manager to proceed with option three for wastewater treatment plant facility and design.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mrs. Bishop, to amend City Council motion 22-2-2-2 to read option three. With that on the books at this point, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none.
Is that sufficient direction for right now for staff?
Well, this is the motion to amend, so first vote on that, and then we'll.
Okay, sure, sorry.
Vote on the motion as amended, but yeah, in my opinion, that would be sufficient.
Mine, too.
All right. Misty, can we have a roll call on the amendment?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, so now the, the motion's up for a vote. Is there any questions or comment before we move to a roll call here? All right, seeing none, we're moving forward with the motion, City Council motion 22-2-2-2, if I got enough dashes in there. Option three, as Ms. Quidnow has already outlined. So can we have a roll call, Misty?
Mr. Waters?
No.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed four to one.
All right, thank you. You have direction.
I appreciate that. May I, may I just say thanks, first of all, but we will, we should probably, and I'm just winging this, so I may get kicked under the table here, but it would seem appropriate that we keep this as an agenda item almost every month, at least one meeting, so that we can continue to give you updates, and when things do change, that we get that information to you right away. And then, the last thing I will say, and I said this to the Public Works Board, too, that we will constantly work on how this is going to impact ratepayers, and do everything we can to mitigate and control those costs. I mean, that message is very clearly received, so if that's all right with you, we'll proceed that way.
Thank you, Paul.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
And I assume you still want the financial work done by Lers?
Yeah.
What was that question?
I assume you still want the financial work done by Lers, to make a determination of if they can come up with a scenario for financing?
I think so, but I kind of want to understand the cost associated to doing that as well.
Okay.
So can you update the, the council on that before moving forward? Great. All right, item E on the agenda, ordinance 1230. Misty, can you read that?
Ordinance 1230, in ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, parcel identification number 002-0714-1822-007.
All right, so this is the third reading of that ordinance? So if there's any questions or comment on that, we would proceed to a vote if we can get a motion for that, as far as passing ordinance 1230.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1230, which is the petition for annexation of the James Schmidt property from the town of Aztlan.
A second.
So motion was by Mrs. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. Is there any discussion or questions on this? Staff, any, any comment?
Yes, everything's in place and ready to go.
All right, seeing none, let's move to a roll call. Misty?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Item F is the discussion decision on request for a waiver of interest charges on special assessment fee for the Schmitz. That is City Council motion 22-2-2-3. Misty, can you read that?
City Council motion 22-2-2-3, authorizing the waiver of interest on special assessment.
All right, can I have a motion?
I move to adopt motion 22-2-2-3, authorizing the waiver of interest on special assessment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mrs. Bishop. Staff comment?
Special assessments are set by the council at special hearings. There were public infrastructure that was run past that site at $3,550, at 3% interest per year. Normally, that's paid on the tax bill until it's paid off. Because these people were in the town, we could not special assess them. So we set the fee against it, and then that interest rate accumulates over a period of time. They are willing to pay the special assessment, but ask that the accumulated interest be waived. We don't see this very often. In fact, I've never seen this as long as I've been here. So it doesn't really have a history of going one way or the other, so. From my position, it's better to have the manx than worry about the interest over the long run, but that's up to you.
And the, the $3,550 was, was that the, the interest that they're asking to be waived?
No, that was the amount of the original special assessment.
Okay.
You're probably looking at about $500 interest they're asking for, if you figure the interest on.
Do we know that amount?
$3,500 bucks.
I do not, right off the top of my head.
3% of $3,550, is that?
Over whatever.
Over 10 years.
Length of time, yeah.
Well, and this is, that has accumulated, so over how many years?
So that's a 10-year loan on that $3,500.
$1,065.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions?
Then, just to clarify, they're, they're agreeable to pay the $3,550, but that would be put on their tax bill? They would be paying that off over 10 years? Is that right?
No, we'd expect payment in full.
Right away. That's what I thought the ordinance actually required that on annexation, so, okay.
The, the, what we're saying they, we would waive would be the.
Just the interest.
$1,065, which would have been paid over the 10 years, so, is my understanding. Is that correct?
If they'd been in the city, they would have had a 10-year special assessment, and then each year would have been reduced by whatever payment, but they would have accumulated the 3% interest.
Okay.
In this case, they didn't have any reduction in the amount, so 3% was on top. Every year was actually an accumulation on top of the original $3,500, plus the interest from the previous years.
Oh, then my math was wrong.
So.
It's okay.
It's not unusual to see cases like this, where it's not even really a, a special assessment. It's called a special charge, because we can't special assess people in the town. We set the special charge up, they're given a portion of that cost, and then they set whatever it is, and then after a certain period of time. But the council has the authority to set that charge and to make any changes to it they want. You could waive the whole thing if you wanted to. I wouldn't recommend that, but the interest isn't, isn't significant.
How many more people are we looking at who would be in this situation, because there's some properties right in this area as well, in the same situation?
This location is the only one that I know of that has a special assessment. There's one across the street that probably has a very similar special assessment, right next to the creek. All the rest of them paid theirs. Most of them are in the city, some of them weren't, they just paid their special. But this one is, I know doing that, some of those paid, though, so.
So a property owner in the township could have paid that special charge, even though, that they would have only paid it if they connected, right?
No, they, they were given the option of paying right up front. You don't have to connect, you can pay it so that you don't accumulate interest, which is what some of them opted to do. In this case, the, the property owner was, was relatively elderly, and couldn't afford the special assessment, and so he opted not to, to connect. Also, he was, he was in a relatively open area, so his, you know, he felt that his wastewater system would last a lot longer than it did, and then the site around him developed, changing the conditions for his wastewater, onsite wastewater system, and so it, it put a lot of pressure on. So he moved, and his son moved in, so they, they now have that cost, so they have to make all the shifts, and so they were hoping that they could do it in a relatively financially stable situation.
This is one of those pockets, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, because as I'm looking at the zoning map, I'm seeing that this is just a pocket. So it's.
We call them islands.
Island.
Islands, okay. Right, yeah.
But they have to be in the city.
Right.
Unless they're in the town of Lake Mills.
Okay.
Any other questions here? All right, seeing none. We're going to move to a roll call, but let me give a quick explanation of what we're about to do here. So if we vote in the affirmative, we are giving the waiver, and if we vote in the no fashion, then that is, is not granting the waiver. All right? So we're going to move for a roll call vote on City Council motion 22-2-2-3. Misty?
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed four to one.
All right. Moving forward to item G, ordinance 1231, this is the third reading. Misty, can you read that?
Ordinance 1231, in ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, parcel identification numbers 018-0713-1112-003, and 018-0713-1112-004.
Thank you. Lot of numbers there. All right, can we have a motion for ordinance 1231? That was the third reading, so we need to take action.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 1231, ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fields, second by Ms. Curler. Is there any comment from staff on this?
Pretty straightforward annexation.
Okay.
It's a voluntary annexation, so should move forward pretty cleanly. We have all the reviews done by DOA Town and County, so.
They'll be upgrading the property significantly.
They will be upgrading the property.
Fantastic.
They're probably going to seek a, a, an agreement to continue to use the existing well until water becomes available. We did provide them information on running water to the site, but I think it was, was $170,000.
All right, any other questions, comment?
And that gets assessed to that property, then?
Well, what we were offering was that they pay it, and then we would set up assessments, and then as people came in and paid, we would reimburse them.
Okay, okay. And then there's a, and this applied actually to the last property as well, there's a permit process if someone wants to keep their private well in operation, right? So the city has to permit that?
Yes, the clerk handles the permitting on that, so, yeah, both of them would have to have a permit.
Any other questions? Seeing none, let's move to a roll call for ordinance 1231.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. All right, item H on the agenda is ordinance 1232. This is the second reading. Misty, can you read that?
Ordinance 1232, amending city of Lake Mills, ordinance section 660-65, home occupations, city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
All right, so this is the second reading. We can.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to suspend the rules and proceed to the third reading tonight.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop?
Second.
Second by Ms. Quidnow. All right, so there has been a motion for a third reading. We would need to move to approve that, and then move to a third reading, so I guess we would open it up for questions or debate on that, or questions or comments on that beforehand? Is there any questions or comment on that?
Just wondering if anyone has received any constituent context regarding this? I don't know if there's an urgency to moving it forward, or.
I have not.
Or concerns about enforcement, or anything like that?
I have not, but I would like to have more time personally to. I have not, but I would like to have more time personally to, to review it and see if I had any suggestions, which I was hoping for the next meeting to have time to do that. And I haven't given myself enough time to review it in depth to, to make any suggestions at this point, so I would like to hold off personally.
Is there a reason for accelerating along, or?
No, just per my last statement at the last meeting, I feel like this is what people are already doing, that we have a very crafty, you know, citizenship here. They are creating things in their homes, selling them, doing retail on their homes, and I just want to bring the law in line with what people are currently doing, so.
And I would say I, I, I'm generally in support of that, but I, I'm not aware that the city's going out there and, you know, writing tickets against people that are, are doing those kind of home businesses. So, hopefully, it can, can wait till the next meeting.
Any other comments, questions? All right, I guess we would move to a roll call on the question as far as moving this to a third reading. Misty?
Ms. Curler?
No.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
No.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion field?
All right, thank you. Is there any questions or comments on the second reading at this point? All right, so we'll have the third reading at our next City Council meeting, which is the first part of March. All right, that concludes the council business. So, we move to item 10, which is recommendations for future agendas. The floor is open. Any, any comment?
Have you got goals next week?
Next week, we have a, a special session to review the city manager decision as far as what executive firm we want to bring in to, to help us with city manager search. So, that's next Thursday. There was a question from the city manager about wanting to have a special session for EMS. Is that still, are you still thinking, in the same thought process that we talked about yesterday?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm looking at, at 5:30 on the 23rd. See how it goes. I'm in a meeting Friday on that with both EMS and the county. And depends on how that goes, if we'd have that meeting, but at least at this point in time, I'd like to kind of hold that time slot.
23rd?
So, the 20...
Well, 5:30 if it's possible.
Third at 5:30.
Whatever time you can give me.
So, what's calendars look like? I looked prior. I'm, I'm okay, actually.
How long? It would just be for that single subject?
So, it could be a quick meeting?
You were the one that asked me to prepare all this information, so I've been on, chasing around.
You told me it was going to be a quick meeting, then I maybe I asked for too much information. I don't know. All right, so maybe it's not a quick meeting.
Are we saying the 23rd of February?
Correct.
Yes.
At 5:30?
Yes.
I just want to be sure.
Next week Wednesday.
That's just another day for me. I mean, Monday, we have zoning board of appeals. Tuesday, we have plan commission. And Wednesday, we'd have this meeting. And then Thursday, we have the executive search meeting. So, we'll start at 5:30 and run till 9 for that.
Well, it's an important issue, and, and the clock is ticking, so that's the safety issues for, for the city, so.
And I just want to confirm, we are not meeting on Thursday of this week.
We are not.
Okay.
That's the one I pushed back to next week Thursday?
Right, so...
Someone was out of town.
I'm out of town.
Yeah, I, okay.
Going to miss the big stormstorm.
So, does that 23rd work? Are you still looking?
Yeah, that's fine. But then I also have the 24th as a meeting. Is that accurate as well?
That's accurate.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
The 24th is going to be a long meeting.
Great.
So, we get on the 23rd?
And I can answer the one question the council gets to pick, if they want public participation or not, because every one of the firms offers it.
On the 24th?
No, as part of the city manager search process.
Okay.
They offer it in the front and the back. I think that was a call that you had taken.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
My correspondence about the, having public involvement in the executive search, I think is what he was...
Yes, that was it.
Okay.
Not in, not in the, not in the choosing of the search firm, but in the choosing of the manager. Got it, okay.
Yes.
The process as a whole, I think that it'd be pretty collaborative with all the individual or entities that have put in a bid for the RFP.
Yeah, they, they tend to have large amounts of public involvement in the process. Everyone I've been at, you're, you're talking to public meetings four or five times throughout the course of two days.
All right, so to kind of keep us on topic here, we're talking about the 24th, but originally, we're talking about the 23rd. So, are we good with the 23rd?
Yeah, yes.
All right, so let's book the 23rd at 5:30 for EMS discussion.
I will make sure that Misty knows and gets that out Friday, as soon as I'm done talking to the county administrator.
All right. Did we have questions on the 24th? Everybody good with that? All right. Couple other things I had out there. Lisa, Mrs. Curl, Ms. Curler did address the joint Rock Lake testing proposal. You're meeting with staff at this point, so you're, you're not at a point to where you know when it's going to come to council?
Right, I mean, they submitted a draft protocol to Steve and I, which Steve has shared with staff, and there's some things that the city's not going to be able to meet in that, so I think the next step is probably following up between the staff and the joint Rock Lake Commission. So, it's not ready for council action, but hopefully, before the monitoring season, you know, in the next couple of months, we can get something in place.
All right, thank you. And then the other one that I have is an open issue is the community center proposal. How's that developing at this point?
We, it has not developed since the last time we discussed it. I need to meet with the city clerk again, and I think some time is freed up now that they have a deputy hired.
Megan was an important part of that, too, so I'm assuming that Laurie will be a part of that discussion.
Okay, fantastic.
Thank you.
So, we're, we're a ways off yet. It's not, not imminent in the next couple of meetings, anyway.
No, probably not. And then with, I know selection requirements coming up for April.
Okay. All right, any other topics?
I think there was a closed session on performance review.
We have the second meeting in March. I think it's the 15th of February.
Yep. So, we're having a closed session after the City Council meeting on March 15th?
Part of the...
Okay. Well, yeah.
All right, anything else?
Can you imagine having a performance evaluation, maybe in the last six months?
Don't ask me, Steve.
Did you mean to say that over the microphone? That's okay. All right, anything else? All right, the meeting stands adjourned at 9:41. Thank you.